Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aluria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Okay, I'll say, would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning and welcome to the January 14, 2002 organizational meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our administrative secretary clerk has let us be known that today is National Clean Your Desk Day. Someone up here made snide remarks about I should do that. Commissioner Vacy has some ones she'd like to introduce before we start.
This is Adam Quest and he's from Keystone School and his mom is out in the audience, Denise. And I'd like to welcome you here. And he's hoping to one day be an elected official. I think he'll make a good one with his nice shirt and tie over here.
I think he's a little color-coordinated with a few people here. Looks like he checked it out first. Welcome, Adam. The first item on the agenda is the election of a president for this year and I would like to suggest to the board that we return to the rotation that was bypassed last year because of the fact that Commissioner Moore was brand-new. The seat that he holds was the seat that should've been president. I certainly enjoyed being president this past year. I thank you for your cooperation and I would like to move that for the year 2002 Commissioner Moore serve as president and Commissioner Vacy serve as vice president.
A second there.
Madam Clerk?
You're on the hot seat.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Pass the gavel.
It's all yours. He has to get his own gavel. I'm not sharing mine with him.
I got one with Newt Gingrich's name on it I could use if you'd like.
Well, if you dare, go right ahead.
I'd like to rescind your motion.
Right off.
No, thank you. This is nice. I appreciate that. Appreciate the support.
Okay. Want to item number three then, to reappoint James R. Cordez as county administrator to the board for the year 2002.
So moved.
Discussion?
Different from a year ago.
Well, a little education is a wonderful thing, isn't it?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
I'm afraid to read this one. Reappoint Roxanne Blair as clerk to the board for 2002.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Reappoint all personnel within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Commissioners for the year 2002. Be the Commissioners' Purchasing Department, which includes purchasing, personnel, budget, computer, data, and telecommunications, and ombudsman; the Emergency Services Department, 911; Department of Custodial and Maintenance, the Dog Warden, Golden Akers County Home, Charles Berry Basco Bridge, the Solid Waste Management District, the Parking Deck, Office Services, Records Center, Community Development Department, the Children and Families Council, Senior Citizens Director, and Lorraine County Job and Family Services Department.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Want me to adopt the Roberts rules as parliamentary procedures to be followed at all board meetings during the year 2002?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Provide for the first and third Tuesdays at 9:30 a.m. for administrative and executive sessions and Thursdays at 9:30 as the regular board meeting days for 2002.
These will be open sessions.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to provide two because I think it's kind of confusing? I know last year we didn't really need two Tuesdays. And it's kind of confusing to the public that wants to attend the meetings if we just say one.
One may be sufficient, Commissioner.
I think.
And then if we need another, we can schedule it on a special basis.
Let's just do the third Tuesday then.
Okay.
That's okay.
And then we can announce a special one if we feel a work session is necessary. Does that make it easier for the people that attend regularly?
Did you move?
Yeah, with the amendment just to provide for the third Tuesdays at 9:30 a.m. for the administrative executive sessions and Thursdays at 9:30 a.m. as the regular board meeting days for 2002.
And why don't we include number eight in there at the same time?
And provide the third Tuesday of each month at 9:15 a.m. as a special meeting to provide childcare provider payments for the previous month.
Right, make that one resolution.
I just made that motion, so I'm waiting for a second.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Want me to appoint Kenneth DeCarney as Lorraine County Sanitary Engineer for the year 2002?
I'll so move. Second.
Discussion?
I thought, do we have a contract with Mr. Carney on this? I didn't think we need to appoint. I thought we had a three-year contract as sanitary engineer.
We have a contract that speaks to the additional compensation Mr. Carney will receive as the acting sanitary engineer, but I see Jerry reaching for the mic, maybe hit more comments.
Well, we do have a contract, but we still have to make the appointment.
Oh, really?
Okay. The statute requires us to make an annual appointment.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Want me to appoint the Commissioner as 911 Chairman for the year 2002?
Mr. Chairman, since I served in this capacity last year, I would volunteer if the board is so interested to accept it again for the year 2002.
Mrs. Vacy? Is that fine or?
It's fine with me unless you want it as president of the board.
That's fine with me.
Okay. I didn't get it because I was president of the board. I got it by default because nobody else wanted it. You have a comment?
No, no. I was thinking, I mean, if you don't mind, if you don't, I wouldn't mind being chair this year.
That's fine. I was just volunteering because we had such a...
Fun time last year trying to find one.
You want to be the chairman this year? Fine, I'll move that Commissioner Moore serve as chairman then. If that's...
Second.
All right.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Like to, you don't want to vote for yourself or not?
Sometimes you need to.
I'd authorize Commissioner Emerick Vacy, Mr. Betty Blair, and County Minister James R. Cordez to utilize the Lorrance Visa credit card for the year 2002 and the mountain attic seat $5,000 each.
So moved.
Do you want to be added to this?
No, that's okay.
You sure? Because when you go to conferences for the hotels and stuff, you may need your visa.
Yeah, that's okay.
How do we charge your hotels?
We prepaid it with a county check. I think that's what we did last time, isn't it? Except mine was screwed up and we pulled another issue.
That's what happens.
Well, I just got, you know.
We had a prepaid, we have checks issued in advance for the people that don't have credit cards or somebody that has a credit card could charge their room. This is the second year in a row we had a problem with the check being incorrect for various reasons and I charged some people's room to my credit card. Commissioner Moore had canceled in the evening because of prior engagement. The hotel, the hotel was very gracious in allowing that to happen, but the check came out and the check was for a larger amount than what the room cost would've been. So we would've been out some money and then we were able to e on to try to get it back. So...
And your gracious to allow to do that instead of using my own credit card.
Right, so we turned the check back in so the county wouldn't lose any funds and I put it on my credit card. So this, we can help each other as long as we have some credit cards to deal with. We can always help each other.
All right, just thought, Mike, it's kind of confusing without it when you go to book your hotel.
I only stayed one night.
Right, and what I did this year is in order to make sure that we got the best rate because we've been having a hard time reserving rooms at the lower rate, when they announced the conference now, I go out and I block off six or seven rooms on my credit card. And then when we find out who's going, we transfer those rooms to those people and then we cancel the other ones so we get the lower rate. So we're not stuck with the high rate like we were a couple of years ago.
You sure you don't want to just get the visa? You don't have to use it if you don't need it.
No, that's okay.
Okay. So moved.
I already have a...
Yeah, I think...
I'm just preparing for discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
To authorize the appointment of members to serve on the NOAC Board of Trustees for the year 2002.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the Trustees and Clerks Association is going to meet this week and they are going to recommend a name to us for one of the seats that the county holds. There are seven. One is delegated to the City of Aluria, one to the City of Lorraine, and one to the rest of the municipalities. And then there are three seats left. One goes to the county engineer and two to commissioners. So I think we need to reappoint today at least the commissioners.
I'd like to be on there.
Yeah, I thought we should have a list of who's sitting on these seats before this should've even been on the agenda.
Well, I think it's just all we're nominating or authorizing is just the two commissioners, correct?
At this point in time, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Vacy. The reason why I asked Roxanne to put it on is because the NOAC Board met last Friday and I was contacted by NOAC about who would hold the township seat that Mr. Balgren held because he's no longer in office. So we had conversation among ourselves and with Ernie Hartman from Huntington Township who was his alternate. So Ernie went to the meeting. And then after the meeting, we had more discussion about how that seat gets delegated. So I think it was kind of in the past courtesy by this board to appoint whoever the trustees and clerks nominated from their association, so...
Are we also voting on the full, the total seven or just the two with on?
No, no, just the two today for our board, I would think, if that's okay.
Yeah. And then what, because last year we appointed them, you were doing the CC...
I was doing, I'm CCAO.
Was that a two-year term?
Oh, I've been on it for, ever since I've been in office.
Why that's not on here? Do we have to reappoint you again?
No, I get appointed by the Commissioners Association.
Oh, okay.
This is just NOAC and being that Betty's been serving on NOAC and you would like to, I would move to appoint you and Betty.
Okay, I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vacy?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
I want to thank you because they elected me first vice president last Friday. So if you didn't, if you didn't approve my serving, I have.
Well, the thing is, when I took office, they, they never had a president or a chairperson from Lorraine County on NOAC. And I know there was quite a controversy, well, at least I had a controversy with them, appointing someone from Lorraine County. And they promised me that in two years become, because Tim Hagan wanted to be appointed again for the second year as president of the board and, and it was my turn to serve on as president. And they asked me if I would allow Tim to be, to serve another year and they would kind of sign in blood that Lorraine County would have someone the next year. So I took that kind of signing in blood and asked them to appoint Betty because I was running the next year. And they didn't. Betty served as president on NOAC. And since then, Lorraine County has really been having some, a strong foothold in NOAC. And we also changed the voting and the membership. And now Ken Carney's office is one of the members and has been since that's been changed, what, about eight years ago, Ken?
Yeah.
And I think we have better representation all the way around from Lorraine County, from the people that really utilized the service of NOAC.
And as a follow-up to that, they also adopted a new code of regulations this past Friday that we've been working on for almost a year. And that code will be presented to each Board of Commissioners for their approval. So that will be forthcoming. And it reiterates what you just said about the distribution of seats and stuff. And that's why I went through that seven-person scenario. So we'll be getting that for our approval within the next couple of weeks or so.
Well, it was quite controversial to get the appointments and the members that we wanted on that board. And I'm glad it's, it turned out the way it did.
Okay. Into the regular board business, we have accumulated. Got to approve some of the Job and Family Bills for payment?
So moved. Second.
I saw one piece of paper.
There was a payroll, I think.
Okay, good. Is this one?
It was the payroll.
Okay, I just saw one piece of paper, that's all.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Items 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, we haven't done this morning. They'll be on Thursday's agenda. Time to item 21. Authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Commissioners.
Newly-elected Mr. President, I request that we go into the executive session for the express purpose of discussing new hires as allowed under the sunshine law.
Only new hires or personnel generally?
Well, it'd be personnel generally, but there is a new hire on our list.
I'll take it with us.
Okay.
Can we go, what, 10 minutes? We live for about 10 minutes?
It shouldn't be much more and Mr. Dennis also has a potential litigation matter he needs to discuss with us.
Okay. Would you like to do that now?
Yes, I would like to do it now, sir.
What'd you say, no more than 10 minutes? Jerry?
Okay.
Okay, I'll hold it. We'll see how the new president can keep his word to 10 minutes. I'll say, break for 10 minutes.
Can we make it 15 just to be on the safe side? We don't want to see it bad when we first meet.
Will we convene at 10 o'clock?
We convene at 10 o'clock.
I'll so move.
Mrs. Blair?
Do you want?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Okay. We're ready for this. 21? Ready for that?
Yes, we can reconvene. We will now reconvene at 10 o'clock and I promise I wouldn't say anything, so I won't...
Thank you very much.
Roxanne?
Okay, need to approve the personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Item 22. Resolution proposing to cooperate with the Director of Transportation to rehabilitate and widen Colorado Avenue, which is State Route 611, from the Village of Sheffield West Corporation Line to Abbey Road. Project shall include widening the pavement to three lanes, including a paved shoulder, pavement markings, drainage, and miscellaneous construction items, and the length of the improvement within the Village of Sheffield is approximately 2.86 miles. The City of Lorraine, Lorraine County, and the Village of Sheffield agree to assume and bear equal portions of the total cost for preliminary engineering, environmental studies, and the non-federal share of construction costs, including construction engineering as well as any added construction items requested by the county, city, or village, and not necessary for the improvement as determined by the state and federal highway administration. The federal share of construction costs will be funded by the East Ohio Area-Wide Courting Agency's attributable funds.
Jim? Why, this just keeps coming back?
It's the same issue. Mr. Carney's here. It's just, this is just a formality to move the project along. There's no changes, no additional costs to the county.
Okay.
It's just something that we need a resolution on to move the project.
Because I thought we had a resolution to do this.
Well, we've had several and we probably will require several more as the project unfolds.
Okay. So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Carney, we talk about in here as well as any additional construction items requested by the county, city, or village and not necessarily for the improvement as determined by the state and federal highway administration. Now, we're talking about additional and does that mean that if the village comes in here and says they want some additional work on there, or does it have to be approved by all three entities?
They would have to pay it 100%?
Okay, because it's saying as well as any addition, added construction. It sounds to me like we're agreeing to pay one-third of any additional construction that's not necessarily approved with this resolution, with the past resolutions.
That's correct. Any particular unit who requests any additional construction will be required to pay it.
Okay. Just want to make that clear for the record.
Any, all the ordinary requests by municipality at that time or that brings it into the original scope of services so that nothing frivolous happens during the planning process.
Okay, as we talked this morning, you're still going to go after the money from NOAC and all the...
Program is 0% county money. As Mr. Cordez related, no increase of cost. Program that county engineers has set at this point in time is that there'd be zero local fees totally.
Okay.
I upfront the entry and you pay me later.
Okay, and in the event that this money can't come through, I already talked with Ron and he's waiting for the call from the state, so...
Always a pleasure to work with Mr. Twining at any time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
To appoint the following members to the Lorraine County Economic and Industrial Development Corporation effective January 14, 2001, expiring December 31, 2004. Commissioner Betty Blair, Lorraine County Auditor Mark Stewart, Lorraine County Commissioner, excuse me, Administrator James Cordez, Lorraine County Community Development Director Ron Twining, Patrick McGowan Doyle, Tom Ryan, Dan Abfall, and Michael Barth, Lorraine County Airport Director as alternate.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, this is, are we on this board too? I think Mr. Cordez was trying to explain that to anybody.
Yes.
I thought all three commissioners were on this board.
All three commissioners and the prosecutor form the nucleus of that board. These are trustee positions and there's two levels of trustee positions that are appointed to this board. That's why the commission...
Say trustees, I'll say appoint the following members to Lorraine...
Mr. Chairman, your term and the term of Commissioner Vacy do not expire this year, if I'm correct.
Is that what that is then?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so that's what, okay, because I was wondering.
Have I explained it correctly?
No, so basically the terms have expired and ours haven't, right? Okay.
That's it, exactly. The three commissioners rotate on a one every three years.
And there is two levels of trustees and...
Yes. It's the commissioners and the prosecutor that are the four trustees and the rest of the board works off the four trustees.
That's what I figured, that's what I thought. Thank you. Didn't mean the complicated, I apologize.
Okay, you did.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
To authorize salary increases for the following Opelone Municipal Court employees effective retroactive to January 1, 2002, these amounts are the county's two-fish share for Judge Thomas Januzzi. The total is $101,650 annually, payable $38,400 by the State Supreme Court, $37,950 by the City of Opelone, Ohio, and $25,300 by Lorraine County, which is $973.07 bi-weekly. Linda Kelly, the clerk, shall have an increase from $696 to $723.08 bi-weekly, which annually is $18,820. And Susan M. Smink, which is bailiff, shall increase from $414.85 to $431.00 bi-weekly annually, which is $11,206.
I also move with the notation that this is not something that we have a choice over. It's more or less mandatory part of doing business.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Want to amend resolution number 01-1078 that was adopted November 29, 2001, authorizing various personnel within the Department of Job and Family Services to utilize various credit card privileges for the year 2002. The amendment is to reflect that the BP credit card will no longer be utilized and various personnel, as listed in the resolution, will be authorized now to use the Speedway, Shell, and Sunoco credit cards for the purchase of gas, oil, and emergency motor vehicle repairs for county-owned or leased vehicles not exceeding $3,000.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
So they won't be using any BPs out there anymore, right?
We call this a more...
I was asking.
No BPs.
No BP? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Want to rescind resolution number 00-84 that was adopted October 26, 2000, that approved and entered into a project labor agreement between the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and the North Central Ohio Building and a Construction Trades Council for the construction of the Lorraine County Justice Center.
Okay. I think Jerry wants to explain.
As the commissioners may recall, we passed this resolution based on a decision that came out of Cuyahoga County challenging the constitutionality of a revised code provision. That decision was overruled by the Court of Appeals in Cuyahoga County. So as it stands now, the project labor agreement that we have in effect is currently deemed to be unlawful. So I would indicate to the commissioners that we need to rescind that agreement.
It's my understanding that it's not unlawful, just certain parts that are unlawful.
Yeah, that the entire agreement as a whole is not unlawful.
I thought there was an agreement in there if any parts were deemed illegal that the whole contract would still be good.
That's, that's true.
Okay, and this was passed eight days before the election of 2000, correct? That's what it looks like on here of last year.
I don't know the exact date, commissioners.
So it was passed from...
Probably in that area, yes.
Okay, so the only thing that's changed is what in the contract? What's illegal?
The, there were, there's a whole provision that we enter into certain agreements that any of the contractors involved with the project would have to enter into all various types of agreements, and there is a state code that says any agreement that requires contractors to enter into these kind of agreements is not lawful.
Yeah, it looks like number 27 and number 28, we're creating two more agreements.
To speak directly to your question, Commissioner, that section of the PLA that we're expressly looking at that became unlawful dealt with having to use nothing but unionized labor on the project, and that has been deemed to be, I think it was said was unconstitutional right now, that the way they--
The common pleas judge in Cuyahoga County had declared that provision to be unconstitutional. The Court of Appeals overruled the common pleas court judge of that law. The revised code is now back into effect, and we now have to obey it. And the revised code says that an agreement that requires contractors to enter into certain kind of agreements, one of them would be exclusively with unions, is a violation of that law.
Okay, I look at numbers 26, 27, and 28 as one issue. And the reason why is because I don't think-- I think 27 is what this board has been supporting all year, which is local participation in the Justice Center. That's what we've been pushing on, keeping our county towers here in the county.
But this talks about a program, putting a program in place, and I haven't seen any program yet.
Okay, good, I just saw it, and I think we need-- I don't think it's something we should be discussing today, which is number 27--
27 talks about putting a program in place, but we don't have a program in place, but yet we're talking about voting on a program.
This was routed to the board over two weeks ago. Ms. Davis, was this routed to the commissioners?
I provided you with a copy of it, yes, sir. And also the clerk.
Clerk, did you route this to the commission?
This is in the board business folder. I think Teresa did it for her time.
It was faxed to me. I got a fax this week.
Well, I faxed it to you because you asked me to.
Right.
So it's in board business, I have a copy of it.
No, I agree, I just want to take a look at the local participation. I wouldn't mind if we could-- I would prefer, because I look at this as more of an organizational meeting, I would prefer to discuss 27 and 28 on Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, these items are on the agenda at my request, because I was advised that Commissioner Vacy would not be here on Thursday, and I thought that the full board should participate in this discussion, whatever it might be. Can you do this next week?
I have--
Is there rush on this? Can it be done next week?
We can do it the following Thursday.
I think we need to ask the administrator. I believe he has a timeframe in which he was proceeding with respect to advertising with yada, yada, yada with the Justice Center. Sir?
I am on a very tight time schedule, but obviously, I don't want to push the board on an issue that they're not comfortable with. We are preparing to go out in the next few weeks for bid. We have to have some meetings with local vendors and potential bidders, and we will be out to bid in about, I want to say, four weeks or less. And if we wait another week or two, I don't know how we're going to get that process--
We can wait until next Thursday. Your talk wants to date the 24th, January 24th?
Commissioner, I can wait as long as you like, this is obviously--
I think everyone knows our intentions on the local preference. I don't think that could slow you down. And I just want to make sure we get some proper advice from Mr. Ennis on the--
Mr. Ennis has reviewed all the issues that are on this board.
And I've talked to him on the phone, and there was some issues, so--
Okay.
I'd like to talk to him some more about it. I don't think one week's going to kill us, is it?
I don't--
Unless you don't mind us voting without you here.
Well, I prefer that the whole board be here.
I would actually, just for, you know, and just for the sake of understanding, we're not talking about one week, we're talking about two, because we're going to meet the following Thursday, that ends next week, so this week's gone, and next week's gone. So we're not talking about one week here, we're talking about two weeks.
We're talking about the 24th.
We're still talking about two complete weeks, Commissioner.
It's less than 14 days, so it depends on your definition of a week.
Well, there's two weekends in between, so we're actually, you know--
What's the definition of bids?
Okay, Commissioner, I'm--
Thank you. Is it okay with the board, we can wait till the 24th?
It's okay with me.
Well, I guess two of the three members have said they're going to wait, so--
That's on 27 and 28. I think we have to deal with 26 today, all right, Jerry?
I agree with Mr. Cordez, we need to address these as soon as possible, so yes, I would proceed with 26 today if we feel comfortable with it.
It's a pleasure of the board on 26.
I don't think we have a choice.
I didn't vote, someone let you two--
Maybe they can enlighten us a little bit more, but we have people here from the building construction area. Are you more familiar with any way that we can get around this? Nothing we can do?
Their legal counsel isn't here, Commissioner, I--
Is or isn't?
Their legal counsel isn't here, so I don't know that they would want to be making-- All due courtesy to them, you put them in the office--
Oh, I'm sorry. I just thought they might have some information. With all the jobs we're losing in Lorraine County, it's kind of scary. I hate to do anything with this, but I guess we have to.
We're going to fix that with the local participation, I hope, so--
So do I.
Okay? That's what we want, that's more important to me, is local participation, so I want to make sure it's done right. So it's a pleasure of the board on 26.
Are you moving, Commissioner Vacy?
I wasn't.
Will you?
Do you?
I'll second.
Go ahead and move, and I'll second.
I'll move, based on the recommendation from our legal counsel, and in view of the fact that the Board of Commissioners are creatures of statute, and we've each taken an oath of office to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the federal and state governments, and based on the information that was presented this morning publicly and previously by Jerry and us, I don't believe we have a choice, so I will so move.
I'll second. Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Items 27, 28, and the 24th.
We did--
24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31. Oh, okay. I had the wrong meeting date, I was adding 7 to today's date.
Okay, item number 29, to approve the year 2002 Lorraine County Regional Airport Authority Operational Budget Payout Schedule as submitted by Michael Barth, Executive Director. The first installment will be January 2002 in the amount of $262,133, as soon as possible there. Second installment will be the week of June 10th, 2002, in the amount of $131,066. The third and final installment will be the week of September 8th, 2002, in the amount of $131,066. These amounts total $524,265, which have been approved for payment from the 2002 general fund.
Commissioners, like last year, I'd prefer to divide this up into, and make the airport come back to us in June. I would prefer just to vote on the first installment and have the airport come back for second and third. That would be my preference.
And I would also include that they, that this board received reports on how that money is being spent.
I think we get those every month right now.
But I want it included in the resolution, so it's journalized.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion to approve the year 2002 Lorraine County Regional Airport Authority Operational Budget Payout Schedule as submitted by Michael Barth, Executive Director. With the first installment will be January 2002 in the amount of $262,133. With that, I'd like to have monthly reports regarding the expenditures of those funds. That's my motion.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Authorize the following appointments to the Children's Services Board, effective January 14th, 2002, for four-year terms, expiring January 13th, 2006. That'd be for Dan Bellman, Olga Serrano, and Jeannie Michery.
With the board in mind, there was two other vacancies. I would like to add the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club, Mike Canterbury. I passed the board application around, and also my Assistant Paula Gorda, because there's two vacancies. That would be five members being added as of today, that would be, okay, with this board?
I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, Jerry, is it okay for Paula to sit on the board? I think she's employed here.
We've got Dan on there.
That's true. Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Thank you.
Award the following bids, the first one for copy paper for the Administration Building and the Department of Job and Family Services to EXPEDX in the amount of $75,897.38 for the Administration Building, and $26,243.22 for the Department of Job and Family Services. Second item for toilet tissue and trash liners for the Administration Building and the Department of Job and Family Services and Correctional Facility to MOLK sales in the total amount of $43,801.61. These above awards have been reviewed and recommended by the Office of Services and Purchasing Department.
It's moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Can you report, Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
Two quick comments this morning. Well, actually, there'll be one, there's two issues in the same comment. We now have the Justice Center up on the website, we'll be giving progress reports so the public can plug in and see how we're doing. Our time schedules are up there, what we're doing, we'll be adding more as we go along. The website address is lorcny.com.
Or.
At org, you're right, dot com isn't running yet, okay, pardon me. It's www.lorcny.org. There's a new link there for going over to the Justice Center page. We're going to try to get a lot of information up there so the public can stay aware of our progress on this quite large project. Also, we now are listing dogs that are brought into the kennel by the dog wardens, putting pictures up there. Ms. Blaebin's been doing a lot of work on the website there. If you've misplaced your animal, you can also go to that same website address, there's a link to the dog warden's site. We're going to try very diligently to start getting pictures of these dogs up, the location where they were found, so you can see if your animal is in the kennel, and there's some information on how to make the retrieval of your dog. Hopefully, this will provide some better service to the public. We're still in a lot of developmental stage with that, and we hope to progress further, but I wanted to make sure that hopefully our members of our press here will give us a little bit of publicity on that, so people can start using those changes in our website. I'd like to thank Mr. Ernie Smith and Ms. Karen Blaebin for making that possible. I have no further reports this morning.
Okay, Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
No report this morning.
Anna Kuscher report?
How's that going?
You're the chairman, you can do whatever you want.
Mr. Bassi, you want to have a last?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay, we'll do that. Mr. Bassi, you have a report today?
No.
Thank you, Commissioner Blair?
I do, thank you. It's several things I want to just mention briefly. The first one is on the Commissioner's Report under the agenda, and this has to do with the newly formed National-- excuse me, Natural Resources Assistance Council. It's a division of the Ohio Public Works Commission. There are three counties represented. I am serving as the chairperson, and we have put together, after three meetings, requirements to apply for funding. There is $1.7 million available for this funding, and the eligible activities include the purchase of open space, the acquisition of easements, and construction of facilities as outlined in the Ohio Revised Code. This, I think there's about 38 pages in the application, and the application form is available on the Ohio Public Works, www.pwc.state.oh.us, or from my administrative assistant in our office. The deadline for applications is March 15th of this year at 4:00 p.m., and we will meet the following Friday to grade these applications and to submit a list to the Ohio Public Works Commission. Joyce will get copies of the news release momentarily and pass them out to the news media, so you have that information. The second thing I'd like to let the board know is that on Friday, Governor Taft called our office to let Lorraine County know that state officials from the Ohio Department of Development will be meeting this week, and that they will be working very hard to get a new product line into Lorraine County. I told the governor, it was the first time in my 11 years as a commissioner that a governor had called me, so I appreciated his call.
Republicans aren't all bad.
It's local ones.
It's local ones, oh, okay.
Regardless of his political affiliation, he is our governor.
Yes, he is.
I did mention to you about the code of regulations, and the other thing is, I have a letter of support here directed to the Ohio Environmental Education Fund on behalf of Noaka, offering our support and commitment to collaborate with them on a grant project entitled NPDES Phase II Stormwater Management Education and Training Assistance for Regulated Communities in the Black and Rocky River Watersheds, and I would respectfully ask that we approve this. Noaka is going to be working to get this money, and if they are granted as such, they will come back and assist our communities in knowing what the requirements are to meet this.
Great, this is huge, okay.
And if you'll notice that my new administrative assistant here, less than a week, has the title correct for the board president.
Oh, look at that.
Yes.
I've got my name spelled.
And what is this money to be used for, Betty?
It's, I believe, I don't know what the whole package is, the portion that I am familiar with is $5,000 that will be used in our county to help educate the different political subdivisions about what they have to do. And Ron Twining has been working on this issue, he attended a seminar. By 2003, I think all of us, and that includes most of the subdivisions, Lorraine County have to have a stormwater management plan in place, so this will help in facilitating meetings, et cetera, to get that information out to the various political subdivisions. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. I just have a couple of things I was going to bring up. First, I'd like to thank you both for your confidence in me to be chair, we'll see how I do. And then, second of all, the--
I think you could be replaced, too.
I know, I gotta watch that vote, I'm only one vote away, just not know how the directors feel. Which brings me back to the director, that's a good segue. How do you guys, because we're going to be having a lot of annexations this next quarter, and the directors are up here sitting, and I don't think that's something they'd prefer to sit through. Is there a way in some of these meetings, because some of these times we'll need, I see Juan left, with some issues that are on our agenda, which we do know 48 hours in advance, probably don't need all of our directors to be here, and would not be the best time spent to have them sitting here watching us go through areas that are not of their liking. I mean, I can see Yvonne being here up until we pass the number, like the bills, which she's in charge of, I guess, all the, you know what I'm saying, each department, I can see being here, but I can't see them sitting here for some of our three and four-hour meetings. That's why I was wondering if the board feels the same, or--
Well, Mr. Chairman, far as I'm concerned, Mr. Twining cannot be excused.
No, I know that.
I think we need his expertise on these issues.
Right, no, I'm just saying, some of the board members, I don't see why, because we've had a whole table here before, and sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't. I mean--
Can I speak to this issue for a moment? I agree with you 100%. Normally, they don't stay for those things, but sometimes we end up in the middle of the meeting going into a public hearing, and we have other issues that are still on the agenda that may require input from them. Maybe, I would like to see them leave also. Maybe we could schedule our annexations to public hearings, just a wee bit, maybe 10 minutes would make the difference of getting them out of the room.
Why don't we make that your call on the issue? If we need to talk to a director, then we can just put that issue off till you can go get him and bring him back up.
Okay.
I think that'd be more efficient, and let you kind of run that.
Sounds great.
Are you talking about all the meetings, or just the annexation meetings?
Probably, any and all. I mean, if there's some--
I think it should, yeah, it should be all of them.
I think Jim should decide whether or not they should be here to help us, and if not, if we want to talk to Yvonne, and she's not here, then we can wait till she gets up here.
I'm a bit confused. You mean during the meeting, you'd like me to have it brought up during the meeting?
Well, sometimes, no, I'm just saying, just in case something does come up down the road, and she left early.
I think what I'm understanding--
I understand, if she left early, what you said.
I forgot, I'm sorry.
I think Commissioner Vacy's thinking a little bit differently now.
No. In other words, Yvonne, stay here until we get past the purchasing issues, and then after that, leave, and if we need her later, then call her.
Right.
I think that's what I'm hearing.
Sure. Get more work done that way, Yvonne. Thank you. And then I see construction managers here in the audience, I didn't know if there was some issues, or--
You tapered the issue, sir.
What did I have to do, the construction manager?
Well, they were here to assist us if needed with the local preference concerning bidding, because they'll be going out with the bidding packages, that's why I had them here today. But we'll have them here on the 24th.
Well, I'm glad you're here, though. Can I ask him some questions? I was going over the information that you sent to us, and-- It talks about the FFE over here, Furniture, Fixtures and Equipment.
Yes.
And it's saying over here, it's, "The budgets for FFE, security, and courtroom technology remain incomplete and could affect the overall project of the budget." A little bit concerned about that.
When the project was first put together, there wasn't enough information to provide an accurate estimate predicting what the fixtures, furniture, and equipment and all that stuff was. So there was a meeting of the minds, excuse me, people that are experienced in that area, and we established a budget that we thought was reasonable. That budget was then termed an allowance, because it was just a number that was set, and required much additional study before we could determine if it was an accurate number or too high or too low. We have regular meetings with Mr. Cordez and his support team, and as we've been progressing, we've been tying those numbers down, but there are still issues that are open, and we will be working with Mr. Cordez to tie those up and establish the final budget for it.
Okay, so that's it for my Commissioner report.
I was saying that that budget could change, or are we going to find that money somewhere within that $45 million?
Can I speak to this?
Would you please?
I certainly would like to.
Under old business, I guess that's where we're at now, so I'll let you guys.
Hello.
Since my Commissioner report just stopped.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Moore, the, I think I informed the board last year that there was a weakness in the FFE amount of money that was budgeted for this Justice Center. Now, we're going to operate within the confines of the budgets that were established. I told you that we would bring the Justice Center in on time and on budget, and we will. But I still believe there's a weakness in the FFE. If, in fact, we don't put additional resources at FFE, we're just going to have to take most of the old equipment and furniture from this building over to that new Justice Center. If that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be. I will bring the building in on cost and on time. I would think that the board would want to revisit sometime in the future, and we have time to do this, how much of the equipment from here, that some of it's fairly antiquated, that we want to take into that Justice Center. That'll be a decision you have to make in the future.
I just don't see--
About two years from now?
I just don't want to see--
About two years from now? Would you say that decision has to be--
Probably, probably in about a year, because what's the plan for that?
I don't want to see the quality of material going into the building reduced.
I, I agree.
I don't want to sacrifice the quality to make up for furniture.
The, the-- The wooden desk, right?
Commissioner, I'm--
I'd rather have a wooden desk than the quality.
We're not changing any of the line item budgets. And we're not going to sacrifice the quality of the building to get a few nice desks or chairs. We are operating within the original confines of the original dollar amounts established in this project. That's why I believe the FFNE is weak, and I did inform the board of that last year. But the brick and mortar money is not changing. The security money is not changing. Several times, proposals have been brought back by the architect that did not work within the confines of budget or allotted line items, and we've sent them back. We're working with those numbers that were originally established. The budget is an aggregate. If we do make some savings in some areas, we can, we can address some of these issues. But we're not purposely, nor do we desire to move any brick and mortar money to any of these issues.
All right. Now, talk about technology. What about the computers? Are we working with our computer people?
Yes, we are, Commissioner. In fact, our IT people have been deeply involved with this project. So have the IT people from the other departments. There's also an issue of funding for IT. There, there is, as I informed the board last year, no dollars available in this project right now for telephone and data cabling. It was not in the original scope of work, and it was expressly excluded from the original scope of work. This year in the budget, as, as the board knows, I requested, and the board was gracious enough to set aside funding to deal with some of these issues. But they have been very much involved with that aspect of the data needs and the phone needs and the cabling for the Justice Center. That's separate from courtroom technology. That's a different issue than courtroom technology, though. Courtroom technology has a line item budget, and it's a separate issue that we're also working on.
Okay. Is that it for old business?
Well, one other thing that I'd like to clarify. It was my understanding from the start that we were not going to have a general manager, that each one of these projects, or as many as possible, would be bid out individually. Does that, does that still stand?
That's my understanding, that we have, we have a lot of bid packages. In fact, the local preference, when you have a chance to review it, I'm comfortable that you're going to appreciate what we have there. It does specify some mandatory content on local level, and also speaks to our desire and that we want other, we're encouraging further, further content. We have some very fine workers and local vendors here. There's enough packages that are spread out that, I'm not concluding that we're going with a general. Now, John, you can speak to that if you have a different thought. We haven't really addressed that too deeply.
Am I understood?
I think by bidding them out individually, we can get more, more local participation. And not only that, but exclude the middle, middleman cost.
Yes, that's always been the plan. We don't have the exact number of bid packages tied down right now, but it's around 23 or so.
I thought when I was, what I read was only about 10 percent of the project, though. Is that what you guys were, did I read that right or wrong?
You, you read that correctly. Your packet that, that was being routed will give you a mandatory dollar amount that we're striving for. And then it'll also give you a dollar amount that we're gonna try to encourage. One of the things I want to do is have meetings with local vendors and contractors and get people in here. I want to advertise in the newspaper, and I want to do it soon, so we can show them how to bid, how they can get in here, how they can get these packages. A lot of these companies don't know how to do that, or haven't done a lot of it. And these are very complicated packages. That's why--
The bonding issues. I mean, probably a lot of companies don't know what the procedures are to be bonded, or--
Exactly, Commissioner. And that's why we want to get out there. We want to do this. I, you know, that's why I seemed a little bit distressed. These timeframes that are, that we're working with are, are very tight by necessity and not by my desire. And if I sounded a little aggressive earlier with that, it's just I don't want to lose any time to getting out there and getting, and getting these meetings and so forth. And I will be advertising in the newspaper to try to draw people, and we hope to have a big meeting and educate people, even if it's not for this project, maybe for future county projects, so they can participate. And we're gonna continue to strive to do that.
I'd like to see it for this project, and it's 45 million dollars. I'd like to see most of that money stay right in the county.
I understand your desire, Commissioner.
That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
New business?
Did you want to finish your report, Commissioner Moore? Sorry about the interruption. I sent you. We're talking about construction manager being here.
New business?
I have none.
None. I move to the board correspondence. We wave.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
A public comment?
None. A public comment? Okay. I move that. We adjourned.
Second.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Richard?
Thanks.
Now.